Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get started here. Today is Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Here for the Revere School Board Regular Meeting. Mr. Burdine, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. This is Brackett.
Here.
Mr. Hydo. Mr. Malik.
Here.
This is Rainey.
Here.
This is Stein.
Here.
Okay, I know that we have some, I believe it's some Richfield Elementary students here to do our Pledge of Allegiance, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. White.
Yeah, thank you. I know Mrs. Arbogast is working with Ms. Kiezer. Our guests are coming in.
Very nice.
Along with their teacher, Mrs. Reinhardt.
Thank you all. Good evening. I'm Mrs. Kiezer, the principal at Richfield, and I am fortunate tonight and super proud of our students in Mrs. Reinhardt's class. So we do have students at Richfield who have hearing impairments. We have Mrs. Blackford, who works in one of our classrooms as an interpreter, and it's a great opportunity to learn about similarities and differences. So many, many of us speak verbally with our words, but sometimes students talk in other ways, or people talk in other ways, one of those being American Sign Language. So Mrs. Blackford is an interpreter in one of our classes, and Mrs. Reinhardt's class took it upon themselves to learn the Pledge of Allegiance in American Sign Language, and they did a video last month, and I saw it, and I was just so proud of them, and I asked Mr. White if the entire class could come and share with the board and with our community the signing of the American, the Pledge of Allegiance in the American Sign Language. So tonight, we have Cyrus, Sawyer, Vera, Aurora, Tommy, Dossi, Ian, Ellie, Sloan, Cooper, Henry, Afia, Jackson, Kate, Tucker, Declan, and Everett with us here. So if you would please stand at this time and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
They were super excited to come and share. So you may have heard the screaming when they were out there, out of their cheering and excitement to just get their nervous energy out, but they did a fantastic job. So, thank you all. Parents, does anybody, do we have a minute that parents could get?
Yep.
Pictures if they'd like to take some photos? So, parents, if you'd like to take some photos, feel free to come on up. Parents, as many of you are already up, thank you for coming. And at this time, I hope that's okay, Mr. White, am I allowed to dismiss them?
Yes.
Okay. Parents, thank you for coming. You are more than welcome to stay for the board meeting, but I know you also have little ones that need to get home and get dinner and get to bed. So, thank you again for coming and kicking off our evening.
That was so cute. Thank you. That was great.
I talked to him tonight. I got his cellphone number.
Oh, no, not really.
Text or call him anytime.
This is for me? Thank you.
Yeah, he said text or call him anytime, so I got it.
Giddy up, get this thing over.
I set up a work session over there. He was great.
Oh, where'd he go?
Hiding in the books.
That was fun.
A lot of energy, huh?
Yeah, a lot of energy.
That was really fun. I'm glad we did that.
All right. So we have a couple more presentations, I believe, or proposals, I should say, correct?
Correct. Yep, curriculum proposals. We have Sarah, Sarah Zuston, and Mick Hayes are coming for, Mrs. Zuston will be presenting on Art Connections, Mr. Hayes on Comprehensive English nine and ten plus. I wish you both good luck after that.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck. No, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to introduce to you Ms. Sarah Zuston. She's one of our teachers. She teaches at both the middle school and high school, and Mr. McLean Hayes, who teaches English Language Arts here at the high school. And I just also wanted to tell them both thank you for coming this evening and just keeping to pursue a proactive, inclusive environment, learning for all of our students. So I just wanna thank you both for taking your time and for the work you're doing for the proposal that you're giving this evening. So, thank you.
All right, hello, everybody. My name is Sarah Zuston, as said. So I am proposing a course called Art Connections, and we're looking to propose this course and start it at the year of two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. And basically, it's designed to allow students to explore the visual arts while experiencing a wide range of social, emotional, and developmental skills. The goal of this course is to connect and combine traditional learners with students who have various, varying abilities and needs together to create a more inclusive and interacting learning experience for all types of learners at Revere High School. Our goal and purpose is to create a learning environment where all students feel accepted, valued, and have the opportunity to learn alongside each other. We want to be purposeful in how students learn and give them the opportunity to foster social development, understand diverse abilities, and create a stronger sense of community. With this course, we see an opportunity for students to learn lifelong skills they need for when it's time to go beyond the classroom setting. In this course, we also want to share that this is being done at the middle school level as well. I have experience with that, and it's shown to be a really great asset to the middle school. And just bringing it up to the high school will just encourage and broaden the horizons for all types of learners. And then we also wanna provide this course to build lifelong relationships and giving them a purposeful learning experience at all those learning levels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Mick Hayes. I'm here at the high school, teach English Language Arts. Course that I'm proposing for next year would be the Comprehensive English nine plus as well as the Comprehensive English ten plus course. The purpose of the course is basically to provide support to students where there is a skill gap in between what we would traditionally see in those particular comprehensive English classes, and then also afford a supportive nature to that environment where all of a sudden we can give explicit instruction in reading, in writing, and executive functioning. When we look at those skills in particular, science of reading that all teachers were required to take in this past year will be applied throughout the course in order to provide that support for students so that that explicit instruction can be there. When you take a look at the neuroscience that is behind that particular coursework, the things that we're seeing out of that course that can develop student skills is significant. Ponying on that idea for us, that seemed like a very good thing for us to be able to integrate this into our multi-tiered system of support that we have here at the high school. This would be a level-two support. We have level-one supports that are done within the classroom, in the regular classroom setting, but this would then take us beyond that and put us into a spot where we're providing support in spots that we typically do not as it currently sits. So in turn, when we look at this, this will also provide supports as we would design the course, so that it would go towards things such as state as well as national testing for end-of-course exam, which is a requirement in ELA, especially in tenth grade, as a passage for graduation. When we also take a look at that information and apply it to, whether it be, could be ACT, could be SAT, as well in terms of how we would do instruction towards getting prepared for standardized tests, but it would also apply to things such as the ASVAP or possibly the Work Keys Assessment, regardless of whatever direction it is that students would go, whether they enroll, enlist, or if they look to employ their skills in a post-secondary setting. So for our course overall, we feel that this would be a really nice thing to be able to do as a stair step, not only from nine, but also into ten. I personally, having taught the tenth-grade class for a number of years, have a leaning towards the ten portion of it right now, and then we would go from there. Questions?
Yes. So how would students be in this class? Is this parent decision or teacher recommendation?
It would be an elective course.
Okay.
So therefore, parents could decide. There would be no force element to them being in the class, one. Two, because of the elective nature of the class, they would be able to, if they get to a semester spot and they feel that their skills are developed enough and they are fully moving through things, they could, they could leave at the end of semester, one, potentially. Or, especially for students who need remediation for the EOC, prior to the EOC, this would give them that opportunity to come in, in semester two as well, where we would have something right there established for them to get that remediation. Any questions?
Yeah, so I had a question about, is it just one period a day?
It would be.
And then you're just enhancing the way that you teach?
Correct. It runs, it's intended to run similarly to what we see with the Geo Plus as well as the Algebra Plus.
Yeah.
But the difference here, I think, the skills that we're looking at for the explicit instruction, while we do the same, basically, the same types of assignments, whether it be reading, writing, speaking, we do the same types of things, but we do them in a different degree based on the grade level that you're in, as well as based on the course level that you're in also. So when we look at it in terms of scheduling right now, what I have proposed is moving away from doing my period of writing lab to provide them, to provide this course to students that would have that need, because right now, we have sufficient coverage, seemingly, right now, that would, we could get this and not have to make a big change to our overall department schedule to afford this.
Okay, and then when you say that they could move in or out?
Yes.
Depending on where they feel they're at, that means you'll be collaborating with whatever teacher they'd be moving in or out from? So you guys are on the same, essentially, subject?
Right, so, so if they were to leave, say, they were to leave this particular period, it would then be probably to a study hall?
Okay.
Could be some other kind of learning scenario that they would go to, because it'll be set up as, you would, you would have the overall half-credit that would extend for the entire two semesters. However, you could cut it at that halfway point, if that would be desirable by a parent or whatever. And again, it's elective credit, so it does not take away from the four standard units that we need for English going year to year.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do have a question for Ms. Zuston. Sorry.
I know, so do I.
You tried to get away.
Sorry, I ran off so quick.
So first, I have two questions.
Yes.
In the middle school, about how many students are in, is it one class or?
It is one class. So the students that are part of Mrs. McIntyre's class can range, I believe at the time last year, it was like maybe ten students.
Okay.
And then they matched that, so it was about twenty overall.
Okay.
And then the students were hand-selected, so they would submit an application if they were interested, and then Mrs. McIntyre would choose those students.
Okay, I like that. And then, is it all mediums of art?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and so I'm, I'm thinking about running it like Elements of Art.
Okay.
So in Elements of Art, we do practice each medium according to the Ohio State standards, and if, with that, we would just vary and modify and accommodate towards any kind of ability, disability, or needs.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions?
That was mine. I have a middle schooler, that was my question. I'm familiar with how Mrs. McIntyre does it, but I wondered if it was, if it was similar.
Yeah, so it'll pretty much just be an extension of what she's doing at the middle school, just at the high school level, so they can continue that into the nine through twelve grades.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you both.
Again, I just wanna thank these two teachers for their proactive approach and, and what that trajectory will look like. So I thank you both for your time and your thinking actively ahead of time. So thank you both so much.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, public speak to agenda items. If anybody wants to come up and speak to any agenda items, now's the time. Okay, Mr. Burdine, treasurer's agenda.
Yeah, I would propose taking Roman numeral six, A through D as one action item, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Item A, the minutes for the work session and regular meeting held in November. The financial report, which is showing a variance of about seventy-two thousand dollars, but it's compared now to the forecast that you approved last month. So there's only one month of variance, so it shouldn't be too far off in one month. So the purchase orders were down to three. Keatsa, Fucci, and my office has made a tremendous effort this year to decrease those, and our staff members have done a great job working with that to get these into proper sequence. So down to three is actually a significant accomplishment. And then the donations, would ask you to approve a three hundred dollar donation from the Gardner family to the RHS Cafe, which is one of our special education classrooms, Jordan Martin's room. She wants to use that for some apparel for their cafe workers, which are the students in, in the course, as they start to develop that cafe offering. True North Giving Pump, that was a random donation that came in just from folks who designate, designate us at the True North gas stations when they're purchasing gas there.
That's a nice amount of money, too.
It is a nice amount of money. So we actually identified a program, student program, that could utilize that rather than... If I put that in the general fund, it's like taking a bucket of water out of the ocean, so you wouldn't see much impact from it. The teacher that that was given to was elated. We gave it to the orchestra program, so that you're aware, so that they could utilize that in the further development of that program, which the numbers there are growing like crazy, so he was super excited to get that. And then Speech and Debate Boosters, they're quite benevolent to us on numerous occasions, but their most recent is the donation you see listed there for twenty-one sixty-six LA. So we appreciate their ongoing support.
Yep. Obviously, to echo Mr. Burdine, always a great thing to have our donations come in for this district. It's always a, it's an amazing thing. So, any other questions for Mr. Burdine?
Yeah, can I ask about that True North thing? Is that, I'm just curious, how long is that? Is that for a year or?
I, I think it is, but...
People can just designate us when they're pumping gas?
I don't know. That, that check will, like, the check showed up in the mail. I literally mean the check showed up in the mail. I didn't do a darn thing for it to happen. But we're certainly appreciative of whoever in our community is designating Revere Schools.
Yeah.
I think it's essentially like the cash back rewards that folks might get on credit cards or whatever. I think it's the same idea, but they've designated us as their charity.
That's great.
So, we're appreciative, yeah.
Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mr. Malik?
Yes.
This is Brackett.
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
All right, next.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our election of the president pro tem.
Can I, I'd like to nominate Keith. Second.
Okay. Any other nominations on the floor? Okay. Guess you can call the roll, Mr. Burdine.
Let me get... Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
All right. That's just as it relates to our January fourteenth organizational meeting.
The thirteenth.
Thirteenth, actually. So that's one place we didn't change that. It's changed on the back.
Yeah.
Just not here.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not usually written anywhere else.
Yeah.
Right.
Mr. White, superintendent's agenda, please.
Sure. I recommend Roman numeral eight, one A through one C be a consent. What's that?
Just one A through C, did you say?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Did somebody make the motion? I couldn't hear.
I'll motion.
No.
Second.
Port me in.
Kasha.
Kasha.
Correct. Thank you.
Thanks. Then, A, we have the resignation for retirement for Mrs. Kiezer. And then B is a salary change for Ms. Watts. And then we have non-athletic supplemental contracts at letter C for David Hausen. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Mr. Burdine?
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
The same for two A through two C to just take as a consent.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Letter A, we have a transfer for Angie Brooks. And then, this was very recent, as of today, change of position, Deb Zendlow, from attendant secretary to secretary at the high school. And then for B, we have substitutes, and then C, a game worker.
Good. Are there any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Mr. Burdine?
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Okay. With other business, with three A, we have the first reading for Art Connections in Comprehensive English nine and ten plus, which we had the presentations tonight.
Well, the, so, how is the information at the, how would that be at the board? Are there, are there books associated with it or no?
Not sure if there, how will we present that?
Okay.
It seems like both are just kind of modifications, right?
Right. That's how I understand it, too.
So, if people in the community have questions, they should reach out to you?
Miss Kiezer.
To Mickey? Okay. Just wanted to make sure people know where to go.
At B, we have the second and final reading for the calendar for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. And then C is our baseball team state, or, uh, spring trip. And then softball at D, spring trip, for coming here for both of those programs.
All right, so you're taking, so three A is just a first read. You're taking B, C, and D as a consent?
Yes, sorry, I didn't say that, so...
So I'll make a motion for three, B, C, and D. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay. As far as the district calendar, that's for the next school year. This next school year coming up, twenty-five, twenty-six. It's my understanding you're also working on the year after?
Correct. So in January, we should have a proposal from REA.
Our parents would appreciate that, and as well as our staff.
I've already been asked.
What's that?
I've already been asked, so yes.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. White? I've had a couple people ask, just for clarification, what that process is. Like, do you mind just touching quickly on that? Some people have asked, is it us? Who do it? Is it staff? Do you mind just quickly?
Sure. So part of the negotiated agreement they have, like, the REA presents two to three calendars to us for feedback as in the, and when they present it to us, it's not like we have to take it as they write, as they've proposed, but they develop and propose it to us. We'll take a look.
So explain who "us" is.
The Board of Education, yeah.
But don't you have a superintendent advisory committee?
I do. They bring it to the superintendent advisory committee first. And so, when they bring it to the superintendent advisory committee, we'll have a discussion about the proposals that they have. And so initially, they had how many? There was more than two, for sure, so like four or five. We talked it through and then developed, landed on one we thought would be best for the community. And so we shared that with the board, explaining to the staff that this is just, it's a recommendation. It's not a requirement. There could still be changes based on the feedback the board gets from the community. And so then we go through our first read and second read of that particular calendar.
So basically, just to kind of summarize what you said, the REA and the rest of our staff come up with some proposals?
Correct.
As far as multiple calendars that they bring to the superintendent advisory committee? And then you narrow it down basically to one?
Correct.
To recommend to the board?
Yep.
Okay.
So if I could, so like in January?
Yeah.
The superintendent advisory council will meet again? And they, the REA representatives are going to bring three, two, three, or four? I'm not sure how many, but they're gonna bring calendar proposals for the twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven school year. We'll start to look at that. I'll talk to, like, Mrs. Krantz, Mrs. Arbogast, and just start to look at the things, look for things just to make sure it's accurate, that they're right days, num, hours, and all those kinds of things. And then we'll start to narrow them down based on what we think would work best for the community. We'll make a recommendation to you, of course, as they're put into board agendas then for a first read, any community feedback and things that could be subject to change.
Very good.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. White.
You're welcome.
Uh, some informational items. The January organizational meeting is going to be held on a Monday, the, the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. So keep in mind, that's Monday, not Tuesday. January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, beginning at five-thirty at the Revere Admin Building Conference Room. And then immediately following that organizational meeting will be our work session. The regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, beginning at five-thirty here in the high school media center. At this time, we do have the opportunity for our community members to come up and discuss any concerns and/or community announcements. Whitney, can you just state your name and? We all know, we all know you, but for the, for the camera.
Really, where you wanna be? Actually, this is mostly a really good thing. People do watch the videos, and I want to say noticeably the tone of the last couple work sessions. I've noticed you guys asking more questions. I've noticed open discussions of policy, and I really appreciate that. So I wanted that to be out there. And then I just also wanted to suggest, or if there is a way, there are lots of questions that I have that I don't necessarily want you to just have to respond to me. If, if they're out there, is there a forum or a place or something we can think about that could just be like, these are questions that the public is asking that could be addressed in the board meetings? It's like today, I missed the PTA meeting, and you get a lot of information at the PTA meetings you don't, and those aren't filmed. So there's very few places, if you can't do that in the morning, that you can get all the information that you need. Or maybe we do a forum that's more broadly informational. Just because I feel like there's a lot of telephone with decisions that are going on. And that's just something to think about. But I did wanna say, I've noticed a change in tone, and, and I really appreciate it. I'm, so, noticed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We do film all of these, or video, right? And they're posted?
Yeah, because these are all posted, so if there's information, but the information is like discussed in an internal PTA meeting, and you miss that, there are very different types of things that are discussed. So like that, you know, when you miss something that's not filmed, then, you know, it's hard to catch it. So, just as a thought of like how the people, this is not comfortable, now that I'm talking to other people. As questions in front of people, it's not great, but there's a lot of people that would be willing to be like, hey, is this something we could just address and avoid this films? Like, hey, this happened, or you know what I mean?
Like, hey, this happened, or you know what I mean? And there's times that that might not be appropriate, you might not decide, but if you got that type of questions from people, you at least know that that's, you know, what.
Are you talking about board stuff or PTA stuff?
Like, well, like, I, I mean, yes. So like stuff about budget, like, like Rick, Rick had like some stuff that was like budget that I was like looking over, and I was like, oh, the next meeting's going to be about budget. I would love to know what energy costs are, you know, 50% more during October. But that's not necessarily a question, I'm going to go up with the answer, also not necessarily a question that he necessarily needs to nail me back. It would be a question that maybe could be addressed, you know, at the board meeting. Does that make sense?
Somewhat. I know that there's, I mean, a lot of people have individual questions that only, that they have curiosity on, and maybe not everybody, and I don't know that having those questions at a board meeting, guessing what everybody else wants to hear, because you want to hear.
I totally understand that, but what I, I get to a point where I ask somebody a question, and then I deliver that message to like 10 people, and it feels like radio tag, rather than, hey, there's a lot of people with these questions, if it could just be addressed. It's one of those transparency things, and I don't know, I mean, I don't necessarily have an answer other than if there was a forum for like, hey, these are questions people have, why are the meeting? And, well, these don't make sense to answer, but these might be something other people have.
Well, that wouldn't be transparency, though. That would be just addressing questions that a group of people would have. Not necessar, so that's not transparency, that's just providing information to a question.
Right. If anything for me that reduces the intimidation factor, increases transparency. Because so, I mean, Keith, you're lovely, but you're kind of intimidating, right?
Oh.
So like, I'm, I'm like, talking to a board is intimidating. Public speaking is intended. I say this to someone, you know, so this is not a place that a lot of people feel comfortable in. And so anything you can do to reduce barriers to people feeling comfortable asking for information is good in my book. And I, this is actually some of my ex-ess, like, just like, this is a place I could ask a question, you know, even if there's like an anonymous question box, and maybe it's not something you guys answer, but it's at least something that you see, so if lots of people are asking that question, you guys can know that's something that maybe you can just talk about or address in a meeting.
Okay.
Are you looking specifically for video or just written or either?
So like, I will say, like, there was an incident that happened in middle school, and it was really well addressed at the middle school level, and it was talked about in the internal PTA meeting. And so if you're friends with someone who talks in the internal PTA meeting, then you know that it was addressed. But unless, if you're not that person, but you've heard rumors, it just, it leads to... I'm all about community building, and it leads to like conversations not happening the way they should in a community. I'm not very good at the such a huge, of being a parent, like, something's wrong, I've got to say that's wrong, you know? But there's people that don't feel comfortable because they feel like if they say something, their kid might be impacted, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Whitney, can you clarify just, I'm trying to follow, for internal PTA meeting, do you mean like the PTA board meetings or the PTA meetings like this morning?
I feel like there's a lot of information that gets talked about in the PTA board meetings. So I mean, and there's almost always like, you know, the treasurer or the superintendents, the possible, and maybe those can be videoed. I don't know if that's a possibility, because that would be a different source of information than we get here. Or, or just, it's just, it's different kinds of information, right? Like, the board does a lot of the budget stuff. I don't know. It honestly feels like it's a lot of telephone. And I'm not trying to say that I have the optimal solution, but what I will say is I do not like the telephone aspect of things. Because I don't know if I'm, if I don't have the best information, I'm not going to spread anything or say anything, right? And so it feels like there is a vacuum, and bad things happen in vacuums. I mean, or good things, you get all your bad things. I was not including, I would have claimed a much more level.
That's okay.
But I was just, there, I mean, I was saying the transparency feels like it's been better with discussion of policy. And I feel like just, if there was a way like, hey, is this something you guys thought about, that you don't have to be standing in front and having everyone stare at you, that would be fantastic.
Folks could always reach out to Mr. White or me as well, and we could be a conduit to see
Okay.
those types of questions. There are some questions that will likely go unanswered.
Yeah.
Because there are things that happen in buildings at times that really aren't going to be publicly disclosed.
Yeah, we, there's a lot of stuff that we probably don't even know that occurs, and you know.
Right, and I don't want to know all that, and I definitely...
Because it goes, that goes beyond what our job, yeah, what our job is.
Yeah, and that goes beyond, you know, a 12-year-old, you know, like, I don't want to, I don't want to know about 12-year-old drama. Like, there is a reason I am not a middle school teacher. But, but it is a way of, if there is a way that is not so public, that people can have questions addressed, or if there is a way to come and say like, 12 people have talked about this, it's not, they're not going to come to you because they're intimidated, but it is like, it is something in the gossip chamber. Because I think it just will build a stronger community if people feel like they're being heard or, you know, or information. If there's a cogit, or some information.
Please don't feel intimidated, that's not my intent.
I think I, I mean, I understand what you're saying. As a mother who stayed at home and made the effort to go to PTA meetings so that I could get all the little tidbits that you get at PTA meetings, and then getting a job where I couldn't go to PTA meetings and you missed that information, I acknowledge what you're saying, and I completely understand. We just have to think through the best way to get that information out. I didn't know what happened at the middle school PTA meeting, so.
No, and I don't want to. Well, yeah, I mean, I do, I mean, I do, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, I don't want to have to be a gossip to know the information.
Sure.
I just want to like, be able to watch you guys at 2.5 speed, which is really fun.
Feel free, though, to, I mean, I'm usually pretty fast at responding.
Yeah.
But feel free to reach out. We'll try to get you answers. There's a lot that goes on, it's not me.
Yeah, yeah. No, no.
Are you sure you didn't miss it?
Lauren's like, wait, what PTA meetings are happening?
And it wasn't like, I don't want to, it's not right, this is like a very wrong, I'm going to go walk you down.
I don't know PTA stuff, though. I'm talking district stuff when I say I'll answer. I will not answer PTA stuff, because I probably don't know. I think I've been to two PTA meetings.
I just think there's a lot of overlap, and like, I think people don't know where to, you know, and so it's just, if your parents want to be able to get all this information.
Reach out, let us take a read, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, I'm just going to say exactly what Mr. Burdine said. You can always feel free to reach out to me.
That's it, Mr. White, you're at, all the, pretty much all the PTA meetings and the council meeting, you're everywhere. So you always have, I think.
You and Lauren.
Well, I would expect, are there, I mean, are there not PTA minutes that come out after a meeting that would include the information that's been shared?
Yes, there is.
There are, right?
Okay. So maybe not a video, but there should be a...
And you can request them.
Yeah. Because I do know, I mean, having been at PTA too, yes, the information shared at PTA meeting is not what is shared at a board meeting. And if I'm not in Richfield PTA anymore, I haven't been for a long time, and so I don't know what they're talking about.
Well, I think sometimes it, there's like a big overlap, like the stuff, there was a very detailed, like the policy stuff that you guys are changing about background checks, like that was a very detailed PTA meeting. So there was like a big overlap in the policy stuff that was addressed in a meeting that was not addressed at the board, you know, as...
That's true. That came from questions. I was there, Whitney. That came, like, people had questions who attended the meeting.
Right, which we heard about.
And then bringing to that is like, there is, there does feel like there's just a slight that I just...
I think more people come to the PTA meeting sometimes, usually, than what we've seen traditionally, here in the last six months. Six, the last six months aside, I think that you find more parents coming to our PTA meetings as opposed to like when they come to see their kids at the beginning of our meeting. They all exit really fast, but I think that there probably is a lot of information that comes on the PTA meetings that perhaps doesn't get addressed at a board meeting. I don't know, because I, maybe it's also because there's four different schools. And they all have different things that may pertain to their particular school versus the other schools.
Well, Keith, they used to be, whatever year that was, two years ago when I was PTA president at Richfield, they used to be recorded, so I think it's ebbed and flowed. You could always probably reach out to the principals or, because they used to be recorded and then housed on the website.
Well, I think I was more thinking because there's been a couple of policy discussions at the last PTA meetings. It's kind of, and maybe it's just because there's, you know, parents that have kind of not come into board meetings, that they're sort of, maybe that's, maybe, maybe they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be asking, so.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying, as well, as such, the nuances of conversation, and that. As a floor, though, just so the public knows, the PTA does post their minutes on the web pages as well.
They haven't, they haven't had the questions, that's historically, you haven't had, so I mean, you didn't have all the information. Nothing is bad, I was actually, it was supposed to be like a common knowledge.
We got it, but that was good discussion, though.
Yeah.
We appreciate it, thank you, Whitney.
Sure.
A way that people, that people are submitted, can ask a question.
Sure.
I appreciate the feedback, thank you.
And I hope anyone who has a question does not feel intimidated to ask it, be it any of us at this table, and Hayden included.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you all. I do not believe we have reason to go into executive sessions, so may I have a motion, a second, to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Burdine?
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Thank you all. Meeting is adjourned. Enjoy your holidays.
Yep, happy holidays.
Coming quick.